Hello, everyone. It's Tuesday, April 1st, 2025. We'll call the City Council Regular Meeting to Order. Would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Dan Zander, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Most gracious God, and heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We pray for our council tonight, and the people here tonight. And we just wanted to keep this business on, and things like that. We love you, Lord. We love you.
Right, and I'm here tonight just to share some of our upcoming events that we have this spring.
I can't hear anybody.
All right, so this Saturday, April 5th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Recht Authority Center, we have our annual Spring Craft and Vendor Show. Admission is $1 per person, and ages 12 and under are free. We will have concessions there. Also, we have lemonade being sold in the main lobby. We do have a list of our vendors on our Facebook page and the event page on Facebook, and I do believe it was also published in the CNG newspaper as well. But this year, we did sell out of our vendor spaces, so they will be filled throughout our whole building. And then, new this year, we are offering spaces for kids. So we have about nine kids, youth and teen vendors as well that will be selling their homemade goods. So hope to see you guys out there. And then, this has become one of our more popular events throughout the years. This is going to be our third annual adults-only egg hunt. It's a great night for all our adult friends to be kids again, and everything, and get lots of fun prizes. I went shopping the other day for everything, so we have a lot of good gift cards, some adult beverages and everything, a TV, wagons, a bunch of really cool stuff and everything. So that's going to be held at Dooley Park in Roseville next Wednesday, April 9th, at 6:30 p.m. sharp. There's, we usually have about 50 prizes to give away, and for that, residents are $10 each, and non-residents are $12 each. Usually, typically, we get around 125 to 150 participants for this. So if you haven't bought your tickets already, do so soon. And then, next Saturday, the 12th, at 10:00 a.m. sharp, here on Park in Roseville, we have our annual Spring Egg Hunt for the kids. We do different age groups for ages 2 through 10, and each of the ball field. And then, we also have an area for adaptive, for any individual with special needs that wants to participate in the egg hunt. The egg hunts are free, and we have, if they find the special egg and everything, they get to win a free prize. And then, as always, in both the kids' egg hunt and the adult egg hunt, we will have our bunny friend there as well to take photos. And then, we also have introduced this in the last couple of years, but we have our annual doggy egg hunt, and that's going to be here in East Point at the MI Dog Park. That's also on Saturday, April 12th, following the kids' egg hunt here in Park. That one's at 12:30 p.m. sharp. We do require that you are a member of the MI Dog Park to enter in the gated area where we'll have eggs. But if there are some furry friends that do show up that do not have a fob for the Dog Park, we do have this photo area with the spring setup and everything, and the bunny set outside of the Dog Park area, so they can still participate if they do not have a fob. So we'll still make it special for them and everything, but we will have eggs also inside the Dog Park as well. And then, we have our Earth Day Celebration. We will be hosting that on Tuesday, April 22nd, on Earth Day. That will be both at Spindler Park in East Point and Veterans Memorial Park in Roseville. You can pick which location you'd like to go to. We are partnering with both the East Point and Roseville Library for this event, where the library will be sharing some stories and will be providing a craft for that event as well. And again, this is a free event, no pre-registration required. And then, it does say available soon. It is available now. We just got it last week. So we have our spring/summer newsletter. All programs in this newsletter run from May through August, and program registration for these activities start next Monday, April 7th. That also starts our outdoor pavilion rentals as well, if that's something you're looking into renting for the summer. Does anyone have any questions for me?
No questions, but... Once again, Sarah, thanks for coming and giving us the update. There's no question in my mind that your love is where you're at, what you do, where you work. Very creative, all the things that your staff comes up with to do, so God bless you and thank you again.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right. Thank you guys for having me again.
Meet About D, New Business D. If we could just table that till next meeting, that'd be my motion.
All right, is there a second?
I'll support.
Okay, just the motion on the one item?
Yeah, we could just do a second.
Okay.
Or I didn't know.
That's fine with me. Any questions on that? Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Okay, you had another item?
Then the second item was just to remove New Business F, the approval, the recommendation of local officers' compensation commission, just that it goes into effect 30 days after the determination unless the council member wants to reject it. And as far as I know, there wasn't one, so I'm just going to have it just removed.
So would that be a motion to approve the agenda with that removed?
Yes.
Okay, is there support?
The fact that we're removing it, somebody straighten me out if I'm wrong, but let's, by not dealing with it, by not voting on it, it automatically goes into effect.
Correct.
Without the council doing anything. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct. Now, second that for the motion, just so it's on the floor. Any other questions?
No, I just want to make it clear that by not dealing with it publicly, but their recommendation of a 1.5% will go through.
Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
All right, with the agenda approval gone to the first hearing of the public, the first hearing of the public is now open. Would anyone wish to be heard?
See, and you thought tails never failed. She picked heads, so. Craig Wodden, pretty much lifetime East Point resident, East Detroit resident. Couple of things. On behalf of the Library Commission, I'd like to invite the council and the public. We have four events coming up. I hate to throw more dates at you, but since you're here. April 10th, at 6 o'clock, there's an actor named Duffy Hudson, who's doing a one-man play on the actor George Burns. He did a one-man play last year of Edgar Allan Poe, and it was amazing. 6 o'clock, April 10th, 2 o'clock, April 15th, there's going to be a lecture about the Hudson's Department Store. April 17th, at 6 o'clock, UFOs in Michigan, and I'm not even going to comment on that one. And then, on the 24th, at 6 o'clock, there's going to be an author discussion. So I'd like to invite you all out, and thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Hi, Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. Yeah, I think the compensation was 1.5% and then 0.5% per meeting, if I remember right. Going back to last meeting, the October 3rd Planning Commission meeting, you would have had to have watched it because our city council liaison wasn't present for that meeting. Commissioner Moody had made a motion to approve special land use for Keystone Auto, removing the condition that would require 10% public parking. This would be at the 1 hour and 41 minute mark of the video, if anybody wants to go back and watch it. On November 8th of last year, McKenna's letter to City Council on Page 4 stated that Planning Commission had approved the 10% public parking condition, and that it was included in the motion. November 12th, you approved the special land use with the 10% public parking condition in there. January 2nd meeting of this year, Planning Commission meeting, McKenna was asked about the inaccuracy in the October 3rd Planning Commission meetings, minutes. The McKenna planner stated that she had reviewed the notes and the recorded motion, and she believed that the 10% public parking condition was accurate. Planning Commission tabled the approval because they asked for further review of the video. March 6th, Planning Commission meeting, the recording had been reviewed, and the minutes were revised to remove that condition of the 10% public parking, since that wasn't included in the Planning Commission's original motion. Mr. Albright also stated that he had watched the meeting, the recorded meeting, and he agreed that the revised minutes were correct. March 25th, the corrected Planning Commission recommendation was on your agenda for approval. There was discussion about whose fault it was that the agenda item was incorrect for the November 12th City Council meeting. McKenna had the incorrect conditions in their memo to City Council. This is copied into the agenda packet by Ms. Holman. Ms. Holman, I'm assuming, assumed that McKenna had accurately documented the October 3rd motion. Going forward, I believe McKenna is being relieved of that responsibility, and city administration or building official will handle documenting McKenna's interactions with the Planning Commission.
You have 30 seconds.
You know, it's difficult to entice people to join boards and commissions if City Council blatantly disregards their recommendations and doesn't follow up when there is mistakes and assigns blame to people like the city manager, city's assistant city manager, that do the majority of the work for the city here. Something to think about going forward.
Thank you. Hey, anyone else wish to be heard?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. John Solera, 24242 Kelly Road. On your race, you don't deserve it. And in my opinion, it's cowardly you're not voting on it. Afraid to put down on paper that you actually voted for your own race? When I left the house today, I saw a rat in my backyard. I don't have no stuff. I don't have no garbage in my backyard. In fact, I've made two complaints on neighbors who are renters, two rentals. But I believe it's the council's fault, because you guys won't clean up these backyards with these weed trees, is what I call them, these trees that line the fence lines all over East Point. And I don't know what your problem is. Concerning the court building, you're looking at proposals to put in electric chargers. But unless you live under a rock, you know Democrat hate groups are burning electric chargers, and Teslas all over the place. I don't know why you want to go there. I guess you do. A Tesla can't come into the parking lot and park there at this point. What was that last item I wanted? Oh, regarding Ms. Hall Rayford, she should be removed from the Planning Commission. It is vile to call supporters of another political party a fascist. A lot of people voted for Trump. A lot of people didn't. You can hate them. That's perfectly fine if you hate them. I know some of our police and fire voted for Trump, you know, not specifically, but as a group, they supported Trump. Maybe their unions didn't, but they did. So you need to dust off your ethics regulations. You need to remove her from the council, or ask her to resign. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Anyone else?
All right.
God bless Senator Booker. 24 hours going strong. Within minutes, he's going to break Thurman's record. God bless him. He's big and powered. I'm asking everybody to contact Senator Peters and slot him for a no vote on Oz's confirmation, and that they engage in a filibuster to stop this Armenian genocide denier from confirmation as the head of Medicare and Medicaid. My grandma was a survivor of the Armenian genocide, so you better believe I'm going to fight like hell on behalf of my grandma. God rest her soul. Oz, not only is he a denier of the Armenian genocide, he retains his Turkish citizenship. He has numerous financial ties to Turkey, including Turkish Airlines, and he was a member of the Turkish military. It's beyond unconscionable to allow this genocide denier to have any position in any part of our government. I don't even want him scrubbing toilets in any department of the government. Moving on, the Tesla takedown in Troy was phenomenal. And I had the honor of also meeting Senators Murphy and Frost, who gave their word to me. They are a no vote on Oz. Moving on to the animals, I'm asking everybody, contact the DNR to voice your opposition. A year-round coyote hunting, the spring is denning season. It would orphan vulnerable coyote pups. Just use common sense where coyotes are sighted. Clean up area. Don't leave any animals unattended outside. Don't leave food outside. Just be scary and make lots of noise if you see them. Like deer, coyotes have lost their natural habitat due to urban sprawl. Call Governor Whitmer. Tell her you oppose the killing of Canadian geese and mute swans. Same thing with the coyotes and deers. These are problems caused by humans with urban sprawl and introducing invasive species. Humans must stop killing their way out of problems that humans themselves have created. Report any and all animal neglect, cruelty, and abuse. You can do so anonymously. To our Councilman DeMonico and Mayor Kleinfeld, let's go on that dunk tank again. I will gladly...
You have 30 seconds.
...do it to raise funds for animal control. Count me in. Last of all, don't buy bunnies, or chicks, or ducks for Easter. They're an enormous amount of money, require extensive care. If you're not going to make a lifetime commitment and willing to sacrifice, basically, your home and your bank account, don't get bunnies. They're stinking cute, but they easily live 10 years, if not longer, so don't do it. They're not starter pets. They're not disposable.
Thank you.
And they do not like to be held. Thank you.
All right, anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else? Seeing none, the first hearing of the public is closed. We'll move on to approval of the minutes. I don't think we have any, so no scheduled hearings, unfinished business, so we'll go right into reports from administration. Ms. Elke Doom.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, can we shut the slides off, the screens off, real quick?
Sure.
I am sorry.
All right, now I'll turn it over to Ms. Doom.
Now it's a little quieter. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one bit of information I'd like to share with you all. This year, we have two council seats that are open. They're a four-year term. And this is coming from our clerk. Our candidates, potential candidates, may file petitions with the city clerk's office here in East Point City Hall. You have until July 22nd, 4:00 p.m. to file. So you can file anytime from now until July 22nd. Is that correct, madam clerk? All right, so just so you know, the number of signatures you need is based upon your population. So here in East Point, a nominating petition shall be signed by not less than 100, nor more than 200 qualified and registered electors of the city of East Point. So if you need a packet, if someone wants to run, they're available in the city clerk's office. And again, your filing deadline is July 22nd, 4:00 p.m. After that time, no petitions can be accepted. And if anyone, and I've worked in the clerk's office myself, that's where I started my career, actually, in the early 90s, is working for elections. So if you, if there's a person who's interested, or folks who are interested, I really recommend you not wait until that end-of-the-day deadline, because the clerk's office does have to verify signatures that they are registered voters. And sometimes, you think you have enough, and you don't, and you have to go back out and get more qualified voters to sign your petition. So it's in your best interest, whoever might be interested in running, to turn those petitions in a little bit early, if you can, so that gives them the opportunity to go through them and make sure that those who have signed are indeed registered voters. And that's all I have for this evening.
All right, any questions for Ms. Doom?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. First, thanks for the election information, Elke. Can we add, according to our letter in front of us here, our Parks Commission Chair Gary Sasek and Al Truhan to the next agenda? They'd like to talk about, well, everything in this letter here.
All right, very good.
For the agenda. And then, also, in the future, can we consider for, you know, the other day, we had emergency sirens going off, right? Consider, maybe we should use Nixle along with that, or at least post, like on Facebook, or share at least something from the county, something like that? Because I did happen to see, well, like a false post on Facebook. Of course, you'll see those, but it's easier if something, anything, even if, you know, it is just sharing, like the county, just something that we can point to and say, okay, this is what's going on, so that, because someone was saying it was a test, and it was certainly not a test the other day. So if we can consider that maybe for the future.
Talking during the storm warnings?
Yeah.
To be careful and possibly take cover?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, someone was saying it was a test.
I believe our police chief, you have access to Nixle. And so, we would all appreciate if you could get out a quick blurb through Nixle that it's not a test, and that there is, I think we, a lot of us got it on our telephone, you know, came through in a buzz, and warning about severe storms and whatnot. And some of us got hardly anything, and some others took the roofs off. So, you know, depending on where that storm, that line of storm went and how hard it hit. So, yeah, we will, we'll do better. We'll work together and try and get that information out, that this is serious, and it's important for people to be aware and be prepared to take cover. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, any other questions? We will move on to Mr. Blum.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have no comments tonight, since I'll be yapping in a little bit about the budget, so unless you have questions, I don't have anything.
All right, any questions? Ms. Albright?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The council's in receipt of our monthly status report. Please report that it is shorter than the previous months, and that's due in part to the city working with several property owners on getting code violations corrected at their properties. So I anticipate next month's status report should be shorter as well, due to some resolutions, some of those pending cases. So that's all I had. Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Mr. Albright?
Thank you.
All right, then we'll go right back to Mr. Blum with New Business Item A, Presentation of City Manager's Proposed Fiscal Year 2526 Budget.
Okay. Before you tonight is the city manager's budget, prepared by city manager Walton prior to her departure. The two areas to highlight will be the general fund and water sewer. In general fund, you will see a tax revenue increase. Our taxable values increased 6.3%, however, the headly restriction caps us at 3.1% increase. Revenue sharing is flat based on the latest state projections, and court revenues are continuing to stay low with no sign of improvement. Investment returns have been reduced from current, but kind of back to normal as anticipated easing of inflation and then a related reduction in interest rates. Overall, the general fund revenues are up less than $300,000. On the expenditure side, most departments are flat or have modest increases reflecting contractual wages. But on the plus side, there is only one election in November. Building is looking to change their nuisance process, which will reduce attorney fees, and significant capital projects and purchases are winding down. The largest expenditure item impact is related to the retirees. While the total amount for pension and retiree healthcare held steady at 6.3 million, this is in contrast to previous increases of 5 to 8%. The state pension grants and the employee retiree buyouts are having the intended impact. In total, the general fund is being presented with a small surplus of $85,696. Now, the part you really care about, water sewer. I know that GLW rate increases have been in the news, and their impact on East Point have been of, item of concern. While the Great Lake charges have increased significantly, most other areas within water and sewer have been held steady or reflect the 3% contractual wage increases. The budget presented reflects an increase in water rates of 1.1% and an increase in sewer rates of 4.2% for a blended rate increase of 3.1. That is just coincidental. That's the same as the taxes. They're not related. And additionally, there's a 2% increase in the ready-to-serve, which reflects continual construction cost increases. The proposed budget has been posted to our webpage, and you receive... The proposed budget has been posted to our webpage, and you received your budget books, and the line item budget with footnotes was sent out on Friday as an email. So you'll have six weeks to review it and prep for our budget, made budget meetings. But don't hesitate to ask questions before then.
All right. Does anyone have questions at this point, or would anyone be ready to make a motion to receive and file on scheduled dates?
Mayor Kleinfeld, I would move to receive the city manager's proposed budget, 2526 budget, and schedule special meetings for budget workshops on the following dates and times, May 13th, 2025, and May 14th, 2025, both at 6:00 p.m.
Second. All right. Any comments on that? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
All right. Item B, introduction, first reading ordinance number 25-1249, fiscal year 2025, 26 appropriations and tax levies. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll motion that we do that and schedule the second reading and adoption at the regular city council meeting on June 17th, 2025.
All right. Is there support?
Support.
Any comments on that? Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
All right. Item C, schedule public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2526 budget.
Mr. Mayor, I'll motion that we schedule that public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 26 budget and tax rate to support the budget for Tuesday, June 6th, 2025, 7:00 p.m., pursuant to Chapter 12, Section 7 of the East Point City Charter, and direct the city manager to publish all required notices of the public hearing.
Is that, I think, June 3rd?
Did it? Oh, what did I say?
Six.
Definitely June 3rd.
I'll second.
Definitely June 3rd.
All right. Any comments on that? Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
All right. And we've tabled item D, so moving on to E, approval of the parking for Phase 2 reconstruction of Nine Mile Road from Rain to 169109 Mile. Would anyone like to either open up with a motion or comments on this?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, as we got a note of clarification for this before the meeting, and also one clarification, I guess, maybe I'll just briefly just double check with Mr. Kern here before we make a motion. The clarification was to change from two to five parallel parking spots. And then the other question I had was just that it would be from Rain to 169209 Mile?
That is correct.
That'd be a fine, okay.
Yes.
All right. Then I will motion we approve the purchase of additional right-of-way on the south side of Nine Mile from Rain Avenue to 169209 Mile, and to create two eight, or no, sorry, to create five eight-foot wide parallel parking spaces with a seven-foot wide sidewalk.
Support.
All right. Is there any other comments on this one? Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
We've removed item F, so moving on to item G, appointment to the Construction Board of Appeals.
I move that we appoint Christopher Curtis Jr. to the Construction Board of Appeals for a term that expires April 15th, 2030.
Is there support?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor. I just had a quick question about the terms, I guess. We had all the rest of the terms, at least on the website, say, August 13th. And then the vacant one expires in 2024, it says. And let's see, so then they're five-year terms, so maybe it should be 2029. I didn't know if Ms. Doom had a clarification on that, but I don't know if we do April for just that term and the rest.
I don't, sorry.
Okay.
I mean, I'd be happy with amending it, well, I guess up to you guys to be consistent with the other terms. I haven't, I didn't have a chance to go look at, like, the charter or anywhere else that might have said. Do you have, do you have something to say, Ms. Albright?
Mr. Mayor, we're happy to amend that to match the others. I know we were trying to get consistency in terms of the dates of appointment and expiration, so we'd be happy to amend that.
Okay. So then, I think just August 13th, 2029?
Yeah, I'll amend to that corrected date.
Okay. Still second?
Yeah.
All right. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
All right. Payroll and bills.
I move that we pay the bills in the amount of $2,201,886.05.
I'll second that.
All right. Is there any questions for Mr. Blum on this one? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik?
Yes.
Councilmember Curley?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to the second hearing of the public, second hearing of the public is now open. Would anyone wish to be heard?
Good evening. I am Christopher Curtis Jr., so thank you for appointing me to the Construction Board of Appeals. I'm very excited to work with the city. I've been living here since I was eight years old, my family, so I never left. I left to go off to school to get my degrees in architecture, but I'm back, so I'm very excited to be involved with the city, so thank y'all very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Blum, I didn't hear anything again about a deficit. Mr. Mayor, we want to know what that deficit is you're running. You had a deficit last year. I want to know what it is this year. I'm glad, Ms. Doom, that you're familiar with the clerk's office, because you have a big job coming up. With Trump's new voting proposals, it's very legalistic, and there's going to be big changes. I don't know if you can use your machines or not. There are going to be more to come, but you're going to have to deal with it because it's way different, way different. The jobs that you advertise for on the website, I would prefer you would actually try and recruit from the high school, because I want to see these kids get a chance at getting city jobs, making a little money, and help them out. They, they, they're the perfect people to, to, to take those jobs. Maybe they're not appropriate for every job, but maybe they are for some. So I'd prefer you recruit from the high school. Once again, Mary Hall Rafer should resign. If she refuses to resign, you need to remove her. You need to look at your ethic policies and see what you got there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else?
Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. I think council made an excellent decision appointing Mary Hall Rafer to the Planning Commission. Going back to last week's meeting, I had asked about recreational marijuana. We had three attorneys for our recreational marijuana facilities that came before council and asked to be open four nights a week until 10:00 p.m. and three nights a week until 11:00 p.m. City council decided to give them four nights a week open till midnight. I still would like an explanation why. Neighboring cities stay open until 9:00 p.m. or 10:00 p.m. Detroit stays open until 10:00 p.m. We live next to ZIP Code 48205, which was reported to be the most dangerous ZIP Code in the United States years ago, and still has a pretty, pretty much the same reputation. Mayor Duggan said at the end of the year that violent crime is down in most Detroit precincts in 2024. Carjackings decreased two years in a row, all except for the 9th precinct, which is most of ZIP Code 48205 bordering East Point. Carjackings in the 9th precinct were up 47%. I know we call ourselves the gateway to Macomb County, but we are also the gateway to ZIP Code 48205. According to Clemis, which counts crimes in the area, from what I can see, East Point had 1,044 crimes over the last six months. That's October 1st through April 1st. It's 174 a month. It looks like about 65% of them, at least, are what I would call serious assaults, simple and aggravated burglary, B and E robbery, theft of motor vehicles, theft of property in motor vehicles, shoplifting vandalism, all those sorts of things. Why we would want to have our marijuana facilities open two to three hours later than any place in Detroit and most of our neighboring cities, I really would like an explanation for that. There's nothing else in this area that stays open that late. I mean, even Cloverleaf, I think, closes at 8:00 p.m., and you've got a marijuana facility that's potentially going to be a couple blocks down from there.
You have 30 seconds.
I, I think it's really irresponsible. You know, when, when the state voted for legalizing marijuana, the city of East Point, you have to remember, 33% of the people didn't want it legalized at all. So for us to be so, you know, with this midnight, four nights a week, being open till, I, I don't understand why we would want to position ourselves that way, and I really would like an explanation. We have a lot of time for comments today.
Thank you. Hey, anyone else wish to be heard?
Senator Booker broke the record, and he is still going, Energizer Bunny, vegan-powered. And continuing on with my previous comments, I've been tirelessly calling Democratic senators, asking them not only to vote no, but also to filibuster. And I pray Senator Booker does the same thing when that rotten Turk Mehmet Oz comes up for a vote, even though the vote isn't scheduled yet. I'm going to rattle off all the following senators and their phone numbers. This is critical to stop the conformation of yet another fascist. All these numbers start with 202, 224. It's just the last four numbers that change. Senator Peters ends in 6221. Senator Slotkin ends in 4822. Yes, I'm to vote no on Oz and to filibuster. Call Senator Ted Cruz, ends in 5922. He was the co-author of the Menendez-Cruz Resolution Recognizing the Armenian Genocide. Remind him of this and that it's mandatory he votes no on Oz. Senator Marsha Blackburn, she co-sponsored the Armenian Genocide Education Act. Her number ends in 3344. Reminder of this and that it's mandatory. She also votes no on Oz. Secretary of State Marco Rubio, 2026474,000. You'll have to ask for the extension for public comments. When he was senator, he fought tirelessly for the recognition of the Armenian genocide. Also, call Senators Cornyn, ends in 2934. Collins ends in 2523. Kramer ends in 2043. He signed the 2021 letter urging President Biden to recognize the Armenian genocide. On April 24th, Armenian churches throughout the United States and also worldwide will have services of the 110th commemoration of the Armenian genocide. My grandmother was 10. She witnessed
You have 30 seconds.
...the most disgusting, heinous atrocities a child could ever witness. One and a half million of 2 million Armenians were brutally massacred by the Ottoman Turkish Empire, starting in 1915 to 1923 in eastern Turkey. We can never forget. This is a mandatory hell-no vote on fascist Oz. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else? Seeing none, the second hearing of the public is closed. We'll move on to Mayor and Council reports. Councilman Baker?
Thank you. I have nothing.
All right. Councilman Curley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just would like to, real quick, in case people don't know what the city council earns in a salary. The compensation board makes every two years. They make a decision. They made it last week, and now they won't meet for two years from now. But they voted for one and a half mils, percentage, right? The city council will now be earning $4,000, $3,236. The mayor will receive $4,587. And the special medias per diem will be $54.60. You're shaking your head. I'm reading from the paper here. I got the wrong figures? I can't hear you. Am I reading the wrong numbers?
$52.26. What'd she say?
$52.26. It's 26 cents. Right? $52.26 is the revision.
Okay. It says 54.60. And my other comment is from me, Harvey Curley. A guy who has dedicated most of his life for East Point, East Detroit when I started, on the school board, on the city council, on mayor, now back to city council. And I was, I was told a long time ago, when I first was elected to official position, oh, Harvey, if somebody goes up, comes up and calls you a son of a bitch, or whatever, you shouldn't reply. You just forget about it. Well, you know, I just turned 88 years old. I got two years and six months left on my term. Obviously, I'm not going to run for reelection at 91. But I'll speak for myself. I think it's a low blow, sir, when you come up here and call this council cowards. You don't know us. You don't know my private life. You don't know which family of mine died of leukemia. You know nothing about me. Yet you get up there with your chest all blown up and accusing people of doing things that you don't know anything about. Thank you. No. Hearing the public is over.
Councilman DeMonico?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, first, let's see, let's go with Karen. The dunk tank is to raise funds for the Memorial Day Parade, but if you're in, we did talk about that at our last meeting, since you joined us last year, so I'll, I'll count you in then. We'll, we'll talk about that. I'll, I'll send a donation over to Animal Control if you take part. Let's see. Then I wanted to mention also, as Mr. Wodecki did, the Beautification Commission will be doing the litter cleanup, April 26, 10:00 a.m. Meet us at 8 Mile and Grashit. We'll just clean up litter for probably like hour and a half, and then we'll have some lunch. County Commissioner Sarah Lucido said she'd buy us some pizza, so we'll have some pizza this year. Usually, we've got Andy Boyer, who will cater, but he has another obligation, and he'll be back next year, but he won't be there this year. I took part in the rare blood drive, the firefighters one. Sorry, Corey. They had a few more checkmarks of people, and I'm not telling you which side I put my checkmark on. But that, that was nice. They had, what was it, 37 units of blood? I, I don't know if someone could, somewhere around there. I don't remember if that was the exact number, but quite, quite a few. The Red Cross was very happy with that number, so a lot of people gave blood. So if you see that again, come out next time. And then, let's see, a couple things. So the planning So the Planning Commission in general, that was brought up at hearing of the public here, they recommend things just in general to the city council, and then we either accept their recommendation or do not. I would say a vast majority of the time, we do accept it, but once in a while, we do not, and that does not mean that we don't appreciate their input and their opinion. It's just that we simply disagree, just like we always disagree up here with each other all the time. We definitely don't have 5-0 votes for everything. So that is at least how I feel about the Planning Commission. And then also, I think just to talk about the recreational marijuana dispensaries, just for a moment, it was kind of indicated at hearing of the public also that there'd be some onslaught of crime or something, but there's plenty of communities that already have dispensaries, and that is not happening. So I think we will be fine. I think we've done a very reasonable job of putting something together. I did end up voting no on the final thing, but just, you know, basically just on a couple different points, but overall, I think the policy will be good. And like I said, I think we've talked about this for seven years in general between medical marijuana and recreational marijuana. And then I said, since we, yeah, it is only 7:52. This is crazy. So I'm going to take a couple more minutes here. I said I'd talk about the Capitol Conference. I went out to Michigan Municipal League's Capitol Conference, and that's funded by part of our city council budget that I was talking about last meeting where it's, and I did look, Mr. Blum, it was like, I think it's like 75,000 this year, somewhere right around there. So it's like 0.1% of the budget, I think, is what that comes out to, but that funds our salaries that Councilman Curly just mentioned, you know, our 4,000, $5,000, $6,000 salaries, plus the training for the Michigan Municipal League. But yeah, so I went out to that in Lansing. I was able to meet with someone in our state representative's office, and I saw her too, Kimberly Edwards, and talked a little bit about our lead service lines and also with our state senator Veronica Kleinfeldt. So it was nice to be able to sit down and meet with them out there. There was a session out there with two retired Congress members. We had Dan Kildee and Fred Upton, and they did one of the general sessions up there, talking to all the different elected officials from across the state. They were talking about the federal government, how things are going right now. I thought it was a very good conversation, because they clearly have got, had gotten along very well in the Congress, and unfortunately, were saying they're happy they're not in Congress right now because of how polarizing it is, but I think it'd be nice if we did have people that were able to get along. You know, you disagree, but eventually you come to a conclusion. We vote, and we move on and do hopefully something better for the country. So that was just interesting to hear their, their points of view there. The lunch general session, that was a very heavy one. They had two, two mayors come out, the previous mayor of Grand Rapids, Rosalind Bliss, and then the current mayor of Rochester Hills, came out Brian Barnett. They spoke about a tragedy in each of their communities. In Rochester Hills, I'm sure you saw the, the shooting they had at a splash pad, and then also there was a police shooting of Patrick Loyola. I can never pronounce his last name, I'm sorry. But then that police officer ended up being charged with second-degree murder because of that situation. So they talked about that and just how the city responded, and I just thought, you know, they unfortunately had to do a session like this, but thought it would be, you know, helpful in case, you know, anything tragedy does happen in another community, and just to kind of see how, you know, another community would handle it. And then there were a couple breakout sessions towards the end. One was about renewable energy projects, which I did see. We have a couple ideas in the budget. I saw for the library, maybe some solar panels for the roof, and I know we've talked about electric vehicles too, and I think I saw that in the capital improvement program. Guess we'll talk about that next month at our sessions. And then also, very interesting session on recycling. I know there's a lot in the news about that, where, you know, how much your stuff actually gets recycled, and they were talking about this whole idea of trying to put it more on the producers of people that create things that need to be recycled. How can we kind of either prevent it or put more of the onus on them, as opposed to all the residents, where we're paying to recycle things, but, you know, maybe we can create less material or things like that? And there's like a whole organization that works on that, and they came out and presented, and that I thought was pretty interesting. Hopefully, at some point in the future, we can consider something like that. So I think, other than that, hopefully you've all done your taxes. Our next meeting is tax day, so have them done before our next city council meeting, and yeah, that's all.
All right, Councilwoman Shadlik.
I'd just like to thank Mr. Wodecki again for making the announcements on all the library events. It's always good to hear the activities that we have there and what's going on, so thank you for coming forward and mentioning that. And I'd just like to piggyback on the cleanup as well. April 26 at 10:00 AM, it's for a good cause, and, you know, you'd be surprised how much debris there is out there when you're doing spring cleanup. So the more people that come, the better that we can make our community. So that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. I'll be at the cleanup as well, and I think most of us try to make it when we can. I know Mr. Albright's always there. We break for lunch. It's hard to stop once you get started, though. It's true, when you're working on a road, you don't want to stop until, until it's all cleaned up. So I will, it's 7:56, I will end it with that. Anyone want to make a motion?
Support.
Motion to adjourn.
Supported by Harvey. You know, I totally meant to make a motion to adjourn at the beginning of the meeting because, and then say April Fools. Doesn't land now that it's the end of the meeting. Totally forgot.
Well, I could say the whole thing if you want.
We've got it. Motion, support.
Yeah, you said support, so I just made sure I made the motion that you supported.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeldt.
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlik. Yes. Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
All right, meeting adjourned at 7:58.